Alright, everybody all set? I've got a chaos over the speaking booth guy, but I would like to call our meeting order. Thank you for coming to our LaPierre Community Schools Board of Education meeting here this evening. And I'd like to begin by, in pledge of allegiance. I guess we have some guests here.
Yes, we have. We'd like to welcome, we have two Pearl scout troops at Pearl, and I'd like to welcome up a few members from each troop we're going to use in the pledge. Very good. Stand up.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, that leads us right into item number three on our agenda, the introduction of new instructional staff.
Thank you, Mr. Nolan. It's my pleasure. We told you earlier that it was a busy, busy hiring off-season. Look at all these fresh faces. This isn't even everybody. This is probably about sixty percent of our new staff. So this is an annual tradition in LaPierre, so let me tell you what you're in for. You thought we were just going to read a list of names, and you guys quietly raise your hand, and then sneak out of the meeting. It's not going to happen. We will let you sneak out of the meeting. So I'll take that far out of the way, I can stay for the whole thing. But, you have to do three very important things. When I call your name, you're going to tell us what college you went to. That is going to elicit some response from the Board of Education, depending on our allegiances. No one will throw anything at you boo or hiss, but you'll know where we stand pretty quickly. So where you went to college, where you were before LaPierre. So that might be a previous district, or if you just graduated, obviously where you took care of that. What college you went to. If this is your first teaching assignment, tell us that. And then tell us what your current assignment is here in LaPierre. That's all you have to do. And if you have an interesting anecdote you want to share with the board about who you are, we'll go ahead and allow that to happen as well. So, we've got a lot to get to, so I'll further ado. Our first new staff member to introduce is Anne Brownrey.
Michigan State University.
Oh, great.
I worked in Laco Community Schools, and I'm currently at Roland Warner year-round special. And I'm expecting my second grandchild by April.
Oh, congratulations. Welcome. Awesome. Next we have Alexis Cantwell.
Hello. I graduated from Oakland University in December of this past year. And I just, past January, I was in Marysville working as a kindergarten teacher. And this is my first, like, full-time teaching position. I'm a kindergarten teacher at Mayfield Elementary.
Holly Darling.
Hi. I also went to Oakland University. This is my first own classroom. Last year I was a long-term teacher in a first-grade classroom in Utica. And this year I am the E-five teacher at Mayfield Elementary.
Erin Kues.
Hi, I'm Erin Kues. I went to Hope College in Harlem, Michigan. Before, my previous teaching position was in Georgia. And I've lived the last four years in Ohio, which, never thought I would live in Ohio.
No one does.
You did the wise thing you wanted.
Now I am at the Media Center at the high school, and I teach technology at Pearl.
Awesome. Next on the list, Nancy LaRue.
Hi, I'm Nancy LaRue. I went to U of M Flint.
Yes, so blue, thank you.
I had launched myself down at Sony Creek High School with chemistry and physical science. Now I'll be at Denver eighth grade science.
Next we have Caroline Marchand.
Hi, I'm Caroline Marchand. I went to Grand Valley State University.
Yay!
I am coming from Carmine North. I taught kindergarten there last year. And I am teaching kindergarten at Mayfield.
Amy McNulty.
I was U of M Flint.
So blue, alright.
And I am coming from Waterford District. I've been teaching for second and third grade in Waterford the past nine years, and then I taught a few years in Elmont before that. So, I'm at Mayfield, teaching kindergarten.
What buildings in Waterford were you at?
Riverside.
Caitlin Myers.
Hi, I'm Caitlin. I work at Stronar University. And then, I have done a number of years in long-term positions in Waddle Lake. So this is my first, like, full-time contracted job, and I'm in special services at Waddle.
Andrew Snowblin.
Hello. I went to Michigan State.
Go Green! I'm outnumbered of you.
I'm at high school, teaching social studies. I have an economics class and a chemistry class right now. And this is my first, full-time, first-year teaching. I just came from student teaching in first.
Bethany Willer.
I went to Saginaw Valley State University. I came last year from Belkirk over near Battle Creek. And I taught a high school, kindergarten and parent class. And this year I'm at Pearl and the resource room.
Lauren Williams.
My name's Lauren Williams. I went to Saginaw Valley State University as well. For the last six years I've been at Richfield Public School, Camion Flint. And now I am at Roland Warner primarily as a Spanish teacher. I also have a teens and radicals class. But I'm also a secondary ESL. So I would be at the high schools, Denver, and Roland Warner for that.
Laura Boishewitz.
Hi, everybody. I'm Laura Boishewitz. I have spent the last six years in Alpena. I went to U of M Flint. I'm now fifth grade at Pearl. And I'm also a community theater actress. Works really well with teaching.
An interesting side note, Laura was one of my former students from my first year of teaching ever. And she still turned out okay. Not bad. Mariah Wooline.
Hi, everybody. My name's Mariah Wooline. I went to U of M Flint.
Just took the lead.
I am a first-year teacher. I'm a fourth-grade teacher at Mayfield. And I came from student teaching out with the Park Academy. And I got married, like, two days after my interview, so... So yeah, so life has been fun.
It was a good week? It was a good week?
It was a good week!
Well, I think you've had everybody. Well, on behalf of the district and the school board, and those of us in the central office leadership team, you're part of a great, great team. Very happy to have you here. This is a spirited place to work, and that starts at the top with the Board of Education, folks that really like meeting our staff, meeting our people. You'll see they're in the community, obviously, very invested in your success, right? We picked you, but you've also picked us. And that means a lot to us. So, we're going to commit to investing in you to make sure you're as successful in your new position as you can be, and that you're part of the LaPierre family now, hopefully for a long time. So welcome, and thanks. Thanks so much for taking time out of your evening, with your family, your husbands, to come and introduce yourself to our board, so they got a chance to see the new faces. Thank you very much. Can we get a picture, Paul? Yeah, yeah. So if everyone wants to come over here in front of the LaPierre Community School sign.
Well, why can't the ladies be in the picture? And the brats should be in the picture?
She's a joke, she's being jealous.
Alright, guys, ready? Everybody looking at me enough here? All of you new teachers, thank you for coming. You guys are walking the dance floor. Alright, moving on. Next, our presenting school is Pearl Elementary. And it's Anthony Mr. Warren who will be presenting at Pearl. Goal number three, benchmark 3.1 B.
Always want to keep track of where Mr. Warren is. As long as Mr. Warren keeps track. I did, on the opening day, I did write down Pearl, honestly. Say it, Pearl. It could go wrong.
You were entertaining at the first day back.
Well, we'll take it, Pearl. It's been an interesting last month. Just getting to know staff. Liz Shuik here is one of our learning coaches. Is going to probably do the majority of the presentation. Let me show up real quick here. And let her take over. But Amber Whitener was, had a family issue, so she was unable to attend. She wanted to present as well. But, we're really going to, and as we were dining tonight, I actually couldn't present on this last year. And I've been reading through some of the presentations. We addressed the same board goal last year with instructional rounds. This year, what we're going to talk about is what the district has decided to do with last year's instructional rounds. And I wanted to just give you a brief... This is board goal three that anyone just mentioned. We're focusing on 3.1, which is by professional development, guidance for implementation of effective professional learning communities. And last year we did something, the administrators did something called the instructional rounds, where we, and I think you might, in fact you likened it to the medical rounds that the professional field, the medical field did, or does. And it's kind of the same concept, really. This year, what we wanted to do is we're taking these instructional rounds, and the neat thing about this is it just was, last year's work was just not a one-shot deal and done. So what we're doing this year with that is we're actually going to do rounds again. We're going to call them linking walks though, which Liz is going to get into that a little bit. But basically, it's the same type of format. It's the same administrators. We're going to go around and revisit each school. We're going to revisit each classroom. And we're going to spend some time, hopefully, looking at some of the feedback that we got from last year to see where we are with it this year, and then also to take next steps with that. So, last year's instructional rounds wasn't a one-shot deal. It's something that we kind of, hopefully, lived and briefed in that all the schools have done, and can speak. For what we did last year when I was at Schipper, where we really built our professional development plan based on the feedback we got from these rounds. And it really drove, and that's what all the schools are supposed to do. And it really drove the professional development that the teachers received last year. So hopefully this year, when we, as a staff, as administrative staff, when we go through, we can see some of the groups back, and see some of the intentional efforts of that process. So, today we had, one of the most powerful things we've discovered throughout this process is we always run our staff through what we call like the mini-rounds first, just to give them an idea of exactly what is going to happen when the administrators go through. Because a lot of times the, you know, teaching staff, and you know superintendent or supervisor, they get a little nervous and are a little bit worried, but it's just as a reminder, it's non-evaluation. It's just simply, it's a snapshot of what's going on in a particular room, focusing on, and Liz will talk about that, focusing on the grade level essential practices. This is a kind of a tiny document, but it doesn't look very thick, but one bullet point in this document, we showed staff at a PD during our opener. When we were back in the building, lasted about a half an hour. So there's, every bullet point is very meaty. So anyway, but this document is what helps focus what we're trying to do. It helps give it to the administrators, give the teachers focus. So today, we kind of, went around today, we did our mini-instructional rounds, where teachers were able to get to each teacher's classroom, and kind of focus on some of the feedback that we got from last year, just to kind of see where we're going. Now, we haven't had a chance to actually sit down and debrief this whole process yet, but that's something we plan to do in the next week. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Liz, who's going to talk about linking walks.
Yeah. So we just finished them like four hours ago, so it is super fresh. We need to debrief, it's happening in twelve hours from now. So it's, you're right in the middle of it. So, like Scott was saying, the instructional rounds last year were based on all ten essentials. And those ten essentials are what should be happening in every classroom with every student every day in order for them to be the top ten in ten, right? So they had a very broad lens to look at last year. And then based on the three recommendations we got, we focused our observations just on those three essentials today. So it gave us a better chance to really optimize our observations because we were looking at some, through a much narrower lens. So that is one of the biggest differences between last year's and this year's too, that I wanted to mention. And here's the document where the ten essentials are listed. And this is just a visual to show the path of the essentials that we thought was a little bit telling to show that it doesn't just go from finding to an outcome. There's high levels of student achievement that will result only when the core instructional practices are defined, and the educator and the system practices are in place for every student to be successful. And we are kind of right around step four, where we're developing teachers' instructional skills through our linking walks today. And our end goal is that teachers will be able to implement all ten practices every day with every child in every classroom. So when teachers are engaged in quality collaboration and professional development, then we can strengthen instructional skills leading to high-quality instructional practices in every classroom for every student every day. And that's just a quote that kind of summed up what we did today with our linking walks. We started a collaborative effort, and that will lead to our professional development for this year. So, one of the purposes of the linking walks was to get more familiar with the essentials themselves. And like Scott was saying, essential one might have five bullet points, and you can spend a lot of time digging really deep into what each bullet is asking. So our three lenses today were essential one, which is essentially fostering literacy, motivation, and engagement; essential six, which is writing instruction; and essential nine, which is observation and assessment. So we were only looking for those three things today. And I will point out that teachers were looking through only one specific lens. They weren't looking for all three. They were divided up into three different groups. And then other purposes of today were also, obviously, a collaborative observation opportunity. Like Scott was saying, we want to identify where we are as far as what was determined last year's, of what from last year's needs, and then to determine next steps for continued improvement. And then also, we wanted to strengthen our school culture. And we thought it would really help build a mission, a shared vision, while working towards some of that common language, a common focus, and a common purpose. So the next syllable slide will kind of look, I'll give you a look at what it looked like for us today. So this is not a course here. The four phases that we went through were a debrief to get really familiar with the bullets and what the process is. We went through observations. We were in ten rooms, I'm sorry, we were in each room for ten minutes. Anywhere from four to five rooms per group. So every gen at the classroom got visited today. We started the debrief process, but most of the debrief will happen tomorrow, and then during another staff meeting. So here's a little bit of what it looked like, pictures of observations. And luckily with LaPierre, we had so many opportunities to do lab classrooms and to do instructional rounds. So I didn't have to spend a lot of time with the norms and the protocol. Like, we really just dove into what the essentials are, why we're here today. So I really noticed that was a great thing, that LaPierre teachers are very used to this process, so that was helpful. So essential one, like I said, is fostering literacy, engagement, and motivation. So some of the highlights that we captured today were the opportunities that children are given in their reading and writing every day. You can see the choices that they're making in their library. And then the opportunity to collaborate. These, those bullet points are directly taken from the essentials. And then, so collaboration was another big takeaway that our teachers noticed. And then essential six is the writing instruction. So we have examples of writer's notebooks, explicit instruction in letter formation, capitalization, sentence structure. The writing goals to your writing were from a classroom where that teacher, after that writing instruction occurs, and she gives teacher, or she gives her students a chance to choose their goal. And then they have some motivation, and they have something to work for when they're writing, and another purpose for that writing day. And then daily time to write across all disciplines was another noticing that our teachers felt in all classrooms today. Another highlight, essential nine relates to explicit feedback, and then diagnostic and ongoing assessment. So here are some examples that we just authentically came across today. There's a writing checklist that a teacher uses to confer with her students on where they were at their pre-assessment. She confers with them during their infinite practice. And then it's a way for her to check in how they're doing throughout the unit. Then, one above is a writing checklist that our first-grade staff uses. And it's a way for her to monitor what students are on track in beginning, middle, and end of the unit. And she uses for her conferring, and then she guides her instruction based on that. And then we have writing records, which is another common form of assessment, sorry. So here was what our brief debrief looked like today, where we just came up with a list of the strengths, and that's where some of the bullet points that I got from board before. Like, the real mini-gritty evidence is going to come tomorrow. It was just like touch the surface. What did you see? What did you like? Let's celebrate all the cool things that are happening today. And then tomorrow morning, we'll create a real, more in-depth anchor chart of the evidence, the specific data that relates to the essentials. Another, oh, not another example, but an example of the highlights that I had just mentioned we did today after our observations. And then leading into it, we'll go, tomorrow we'll go through some goals and some next steps based on the observations that were had today. And then I'll, or celebrate and build the common strengths that we observed too. I just thought I'd end with a quote from Arzana. "All professionals share their talents and skills. They help the whole school develop the collective wisdom. Sometimes the best things that are happening are right down the hallway from you when you're not able to be there because you're also teaching." So, it was a great way to just celebrate what they're already doing.
So, like you said, we're just right in the middle of it. And, you know, Liz kept referencing, we have a staff meeting tomorrow morning. So in that staff meeting, we're going to use that staff meeting to try and focus on, beginning to develop some of the feedback process or just the notices that we had. And then, kind of, again, keeping in mind the things that we talked about last year versus where we are this year. And then, well, the real fun part is when the administrative team comes in, we never tell them what we find, because we want to see if they discover the same things we discover. And that's been, and more than not, it comes up, they're very similar. And that happened all of last year, and so we kind of look forward to it. I mean, ultimately, what we really want to do is just take an honest look at where our building is, where our strengths are, where are we missing, how are we making it better. And I mean, and that's what this is all about. And celebrating successes and focusing on carrying the fruits on the areas that we're working. Thank you. I think it's important to highlight for the board, just as a reminder, thanks to Scott and Liz for pointing this out, but look at the number of new teachers that were in this building today. And there represents about half the folks that are new to LaPierre, maybe not new to teaching, but new to LaPierre. Unfortunately, for Laura's sake, I didn't have any process like this to engage in as a new teacher, right? We have some experienced staff sitting in the audience today, who, there's a mutual benefit when you talk about the opportunity. Maybe this is my sixth day teaching, right? Believe it or not, it's a pretty complicated job. Takes a long time to figure out the nuances of how to instruct in all these different areas. Elementary teachers have a lot of subjects to teach, and there's a lot of techniques and science, I'm sorry. This is not, teaching is not a mystery to us. Good teaching and good practices are scientifically-based, research-based, and they're all good. So our goal as a staff, our goal as a district, is to identify what those best practices are, show people what they are, provide learning coach support, help them, not just load the keys at your classroom and then evaluate them twice a year and say, gosh, we really hope you can develop that in college or wherever. So, I'm an experienced teacher, right? I've got my thirty kiddos in my classroom, okay? And I'm a good teacher, and those kids are benefiting from my years of teaching and my wisdom. But now, my colleagues, in turn, their students can benefit from that same wisdom. So the sharing of an experienced teacher with a new teacher, and you know what? They may pick something up as well as they're watching a colleague that they never got to see before. I've always said this, that after becoming an administrator, I felt when I began my own teaching, and again, sorry Laura, that it could have been a lot better. And I wished I would have had the opportunity. Just by watching other people teach, nothing formal, it didn't have to be a process, there was no debrief, but just like, oh, that's way better than how I do it. So note to self, right? And we have just formalized that process here. And I think I wanted to mention, Kurt Scott on a number of occasions mentioned, so we did it at Schipper last year. I presented on the same goal, here's how we did it. These buildings, they don't operate lockstep because they can't, because individual humans make up the building, and so they take on a flavor and a culture of their own. But the basic nuts and bolts of what we're instructing on, the development, how the development is happening, how the learning coaching is taking place, is similar. The board goals, the universe are the same everywhere. So I know there was a lot of consternation about all the administrative moves, and trust me, I had some myself. But not too bad, because they're just going in, and the same goals that they had at Schipper are the same goals they have at Pearl. It's just a new phase, a new approach, you know? That's an important thing. If we just said to the five elementary schools, you're an autonomous entity, and however you get there is however you get there, and good luck figuring it out, I would be a lot more nervous about some of these moves that we made with some of the teaching staff. And the final point I wanted to make, just to focus on Scott's last point, which was, there's a lot of congruence with what the staff, when they go through this process, what they identify as strengths and weaknesses, and what the administrative team comes in and finds, however, later after we do it, right? So, this is not, and it just continues to reinforce that we're looking at the right things, we're seeing it together, and that the real work of getting better happens in the buildings, not as a form of an evaluation, not as a gotcha, oh, we saw that you guys were really weak in essential six, you better get better. They identify it, and they say, you know what? We didn't see evidence of this as a staff. That's a much bigger motivator than the superintendent coming in or the principal coming in and prescribing that as a, we're thinking of getting it better at. And so, I mean, my, I've told you guys this before, my whole viewpoint of this process, learning coaching, is I have learned so much, and my thinking has evolved on this so much in the last four or five years. And our, you know, Michelle was writing an article, we're kind of looking at it, and kind of why there's been so much success recently with test scores. She makes a great point that says, you know, when she took this... She makes a great point that says, you know, when she took this job, was it five years ago, six years ago now, that her focus wasn't on, we need to improve test scores. Her focus was always as the director of curriculum instruction, we need to fix our practices and that stuff will automatically become as a result of it. And it's happening, right? And these are the practices we're talking about. So, um, great job, I really think you did a nice job highlighting that. But, um, I think we always need to kind of step back as a board, as a 30,000-foot view and say, you know, three months ago, four months ago, Scott was in a different building, right? And now he just steps in and the wheels just keep turning.
My 20 years of education, it seems like from the business side and from the educational side of teaching, that Roy said, if we just could do business better in education and actually adapt some of the business practices, we would see a difference. And this is a business practice, it's 360 eval. And that's exactly what we do in our building is that we have our peers evaluators. And I've learned as a peer evaluator, more watching the other professors than I can even probably write down or, you know, tell someone. I've learned so much. So I, I see it more as like a 360 type thing, maybe not in the eval purposes, but just the way you're looking at transparenciness is something that's awesome.
I really think that peer evaluation is, is probably the next thing for us to start to talk about, consider. There was a model in Tennessee where they have a whole master teacher, um, part of the, uh, pay structure from the, was it, uh, a separate position? And so it's, you had to meet certain criteria and then you kind of graduated to this master evaluator. You weren't an administrator, you weren't a learning coach, you were just in the evaluative capacity, but you were from a teaching perspective.
We look forward to it. I mean, it's one of the favorite parts of our job because we just sit in somebody else's classroom. And then we look forward to having someone else sit in our classrooms too. Because we want to learn, hey, if we're doing something that, you know, can be done better and how, and that's how it's seen, it's not seen as a, a negative thing. So it's very, very cool.
Rather than make the folks at Turrell who are kind enough to be here and sit through this, if anybody else has any comments or anything they want to make to them, now go ahead and make them. They'll be free to do if they'd like.
Thank you so much. Cause like Lisa said, even for us to hear when the schools come in and show us what you're doing, because we don't get to go all the time in there and see this, and so I love it. Yeah, whatever. You know, we used to love, we used to go to buildings, but I still, it's, it's great when they come out to us and we still get to see what's going on all the time. And years and years ago, I think teachers did take it as a, you know, like, I don't want to be told, you know what I mean? It was like more like, oh, don't tell me, you know, that I'm not doing good or something. That should never have felt that way, you know? You should feel, like you say, that it's, it's great to see other ways to do everything that's not against you. It's just showing you, you know, that this is gonna be great.
I love the word lives on celebrate, we're celebrating our success. And I think that's so important. If we celebrate, then we can fix the other things that we need to, because no one's gonna be 100%. So that was great, thank you.
Thank you. I was just gonna say, I think it's great and the sharing and the learning that you guys are doing with each other and the best practices that are coming out of this and we're sharing. I mean, I am really excited about that. I'm really excited about the elementary, you know, our bond. And I'm really excited about what our elementary students could actually get. It's just far, I wish I could go back to elementary school, honestly, because it's amazing what we're gonna be able to give our kids. I mean, it's fantastic. Thank you for all the hard work that actually goes into all of this, because I know it's not easy. So that's the best part.
My heart does go out to you, you know, it's not easy dealing with these chapters. No, I seriously, no, thank you and, uh, good luck this school.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the, you know, students coming in.
I want to say, like, thank you.
And then when we did get the email about the staff changes and Mr. Moore going to Turrell, I'm like, well, Turrell's gonna be fine. That's, you know, you know. Thank you, but to tell the kids they did great job.
I just want to say, I have 23 years of teaching experience. It was great to go into new classrooms and I got a handful of new ideas that I decided to try out. It's awesome to see that, you know? It's great to share.
You know, I just wanted to say thank you too for everybody. First of all, I appreciate the fact that you came here and you continue to support and leadership in the building and you're part of the process. You are the leadership in the building. And so I, I mean, the other word that I took out of this too, and celebrate was, you said, we authentically arrived at these requirements. I mean, if it, if it just falls out of the process, that's the way it should be. And you guys are obviously doing it right. And I would love to have you come back, love to see this maybe a month from now. Right now, like you just painted it, the paint's not dry. But I'd love to see where this goes and unfortunately you were first up, so, you know? But I really do appreciate, and as Summer said, the work that goes into it and everything that you're doing to try to push yourselves to be better. And in my line of work, I, you learn sometimes by watching, you see good things that others do. Frankly, you learn more by watching, you see what you're not doing. You see what doesn't work, so you don't repeat that and say, yeah. And, you know, the thing that I like too is that, you know, you said after a couple of, a couple of years of teaching, you get a chance to see others. And even with some of the young kids, I would imagine right out of college are coming in and they're going, wow, okay, I never thought of that. And, I mean, it's just a new way of looking at things sometimes. It's just a fresh approach. I really appreciate the fact that you're continuing to do that, so thank you very much. You're all free to leave.
Thanks for being the first ones to go to Lolly's Art.
The next item on our agenda is public comment, next, you know, public comment occurs. So we will move right on to board goal presentation. Michelle, you're up.
It's always good to take care of these presentations and see the work that we're doing in, in progress and we're gonna talk about that today.
Like, well covered, it's your labor.
Yeah. Yeah. I think you covered a couple of my slides.
Well, then feel free to just get way back to that, Michelle. You may have gotten a little later the point.
Well, it was really good. It was really good to see them focusing on goal number three, because if you notice last year, our goal was truly on one and two. So my presentation tonight is really gonna jump forward to three as well and pick up on some of the, our next steps, which we talked about today. So, um, as you know, this is kind of our, our visual for our district's improvement plan, all the work we do in PD, the school improvement plan, and it's really growing staff and those five key elements of differentiation. I want to repeat this with every board goal update that we present, because it's all of those working pieces that work together that we're focusing on. And they're all aligned to the board goals. And like I said, the district improvement plan that we spent to this date, the building improvement plans, are all the grant allocation funds that we get are really tied to these five elements of differentiation.
Yeah, just that, whenever I see that, you showed us that before. It's, it's the, this is our brain, remember the old ad? This is our brain, this is our brain and development.
Yes. So you'll see keywords, curriculum, that's our K and D work, and the lesson planning instructions, the quality instructional strategies, the assessments, the continuous scrolling, our practice informative in some of the assessments to drive the, the discussion and collaboration. Management is managing the collaborative process, the data analysis days that our buildings go through. And then of course, the growth mindset, that environment that we have to create, um, to, to have the growth mindset that you just heard tonight, it's love growing and it's, it's not the other, it's, there's always a place to go. So all that works together, you can't have one piece without the other. So in me, um, the spring assessment results were, um, the barbell was lifted last week, over the weekend. So we're starting to dig in some data and these are some highlights, so we know that we're making progress. Um, I'm gonna read these to you, but it's pretty, um, Schickler Elementary is the top performing elementary school in Pure County, um, outperforming Alma and Chapel. Schickler beats the Little Pure County average in all seven tested areas. No other elementary school surpassed the average in more than five areas. Murphy and Schickler are the two top high, high performing elementary schools in fifth grade math. Um, and Murphy math, fifth grade was, took the charts, unbelievable, beyond surpassed everyone. Um, in Genesee and Look Here counties, Murphy and Schickler are also the top four in Genesee, Little Pure counties in fifth grade ELA. The district has a whole score above county average in six of seven tested areas on the elementary MSTF. And we also scored above county average in MSTF, PSAT, and seventh grade ELA, sixth, seventh, and ninth grade math, ninth, tenth, and eleventh, um, English-based reading and writing, or evidence-based reading and writing, and eleventh grade social studies. So, what happened? Here's some trend data, um, based on, um, ELA, is that ELA grades three through 11? So this is the county compared to Look Here, here is red. Um, you will notice, we'll see some trends to notice. In ELA, we continue to trend up in fourth, sixth, seventh, eighth, and 10th. Um, maintaining, I call it maintaining, because when you go from 53 to 54, or 54 to 53, it's really maintaining, because they're different kids. Um, maintaining or slight decrease in third, fifth, and ninth and 11th. However, the trend in these three levels are the same trend countywide and statewide. So I wanted to pay particular attention to, because when you first look at nine, 10, and 11, you see, or not, sorry, nine and 11, the slope is going down again, that's same trend in Pure County and, and the state. Um, but our kids from the same, so we get to data analysis, the kids from the same cohort, so our 10th graders that took PSAT to 11th grade grew on average 30 points. Um, but you can't tell that here, because what also happened is the benchmarks to be college and career ready, two years ago, were 420 the cut-off point, and they upped that to 430. So it happened, um, it's a little time really.
The period.
I talked a lot and I know how to sell these slides, do you? I have a lot more slides. I can show you the LTs, so get ready for some data. Um, in math, we're trending up in fourth, sixth, seventh, eighth, and ninth, maintaining again with slight decline in third, fifth, still scoring above the districts and the county, and then 10th and 11th. In 10th grade, the decline is consistent statewide, countywide, and we attribute that to, that test is very algebraic and statistic heavy, and most original graders across the state are taking geometry that year. So our, um, geometry teachers got together this summer and identified what is on the assessment that they can incorporate into the geometry. But that's, I think that's gonna be, come to be a statewide concern and we might even see some, um, changes in when the kids take the, take those classes. So for example, three, four score kids are taking geometry. Um, and the SAT cut scores are also increases here by 10 points from 470 to 480. So again, that threw off our, some of our data analysis. Social studies, remember science isn't, um, tested yet? It will be this year, this year, to, with the new standards. Um, so grades five, you see a slight increase maintaining, um, grade eight, slight decrease, and then, um, grade 11 still scoring above the county. There are a lot of changes coming to social studies and science, um, at the elementary level and the secondary level. Uh, social studies are starting again to meet with Roy Solis, who's our guru at PISD. Um, we had some other additional resources in Mesa. In elementary, they haven't had resources that I have them like because the social study standards were just adopted. So we have a resource with them, and Roy Solis is meeting with them. And in science with Jamie, um, she's connected to the state resources for, um, third and fourth grade. And then are all of our teachers in kindergarten, first, second, and fifth are being trained in BLTW. So we're, we're doing really well with the science. Oh, okay, so this is what I'm not gonna focus on tonight, but I just want to refresh memory from last year, we continued to monitor these goals, because remember our work goals are ever-changing, they're, they're not static. And if we see that, for example, the preschool one, we revise our checkpoints because we were blown out of the park. That's not realistic, we want some challenging checkpoints. Um, so I was gonna show you all this data, but I'm gonna give that to Matt to send you in another presentation. Uh, but what I want to really focus on, and all the other ones were small group students and I'm learning, learning coaches. You've heard all of these things in, in, um, building presentations. What I really want to get to is goal number three, because that, we've done some things over the summer and rolled out to our staff, um, on the first two days of PD, on what, what are our next steps, okay? So this goal three is really our collaborative processes. And, um, I'm gonna focus on benchmark three, one B, which Turrell did tonight, and with the instructional rounds. So last year, this is the slide that we covered, um, we did district-wide instructional rounds, it was called the Harvard model, and the linking blocks is another form of instructional rounds, it's just called the linking blocks. So this really, again, narrowed all of our focus. I, um, Scott mentioned our focus areas. I'm gonna give you both, because I can talk to them. Scott mentioned, you know, how the buildings narrowed, helped us narrow the focus and the teachers when they did their in-building instructional rounds. But the way handout that I'm giving you were all, all of our buildings focused from last year's instructional rounds. And then this year, what they're doing is they're taking it down equal, like what this is, they're narrowing it down even further in their building to, um, give us something to look at in the link box. So they're related, but they're narrowing it down even further. So that's, this was intentional to go to linking blocks, because linking blocks are very data-driven. And so now we've emerged from, okay, all of these essentials, to, or all of, for 612, it's the Danielson domain 3A, B, and C, uh, 3A, B, C, and D. And then now we're narrowing it down to look at specific things and then we're collecting data on them through the, um, linking box. But what drove our next step are these common goals that emerged. Across every building, we noticed some common themes in all of our buildings. Um, intentional planning to determine the success criteria. Um, success criteria is a handy term for what, what the students know what their next steps are. Um, we identified that we need the success criteria from our learning targets. So traditionally, our teachers, they have the learning targets, they have the posts and labels. But does it narrow it down even further to what does the student, does the student know that they have to be able to do? And do you know that they have to be able to do, as you've heard, or you saw some of the pictures, like those confirmed checklists, those types of things? Um, and that came from essential one, and it's also related to Danielson 3A. Another common goal emerged with all our buildings, our developing consistent approaches to data collection. So I was really excited to see all the data collection that you're doing, because that came out in your link box. Um, using, and then using the K and V. So, you know, K and V's are one of our board goals. Um, are we really using them to determine what we're going to formally assess? Are our collaborative teams, do they have common format assessments built in? And then are we bringing them back to collaboration to, to analyze that data and determine next steps collaboratively? So that emerged from essential three, nine, and three D. So those are some common themes. And then again, each building has their own, what the outcomes were and they're narrowing it down further to, um, administrate their building, within building, and administrative linking box. So this year, we've heard today, teachers and administrators will develop a shared understanding of linking box. That's one thing I heard Scott come in today, said, Kim, this is all fresh today, I'm still learning what, what this is really gonna do for us. So that's one of our goals, develop shared understanding of specific instructional practices that you heard tonight, and monitor those practices, um, identify the strengths, the growth, and determine the next steps. So it's our process. All right. Um, and again, you heard tonight that it's, it's more focused, um, than the Harvard model. And we don't want more than four targeted areas to focus on. They look through the lens of, of specific criteria, provide a database evidence, so even tell it, so how many times do they see, um, students of small group or, or teacher confirming, um, the, confirming checklist? And then, um, it's used as a form of assessment tool to check in, provide strengths, next steps, and the building work on those for an entire year. So as you see, we have a full year of linking blocks across the building. And, um, and then that's the agenda for the, really the format of the agenda. And Crystal White has been very helpful in helping supporting our buildings with, you know, setting the buildings up with their own building blocks and then facilitating our linking blocks. And I'm, I'm so pleased that, um, she invited me on day Tuesday to go to be, uh, wanted to be a trainer for the school-wide essential practices, not just K three and four, five. Um, so I'm excited about that because I can see us using, that's our next session, two years from now.
Why, why would you wait too long to get those bottom four and especially the bottom two done and that move up?
I'm glad you asked that question. Um, our principles are pulled out a lot. They, and, and Crystal's facilitating one, she works for the county. But, um, our, and this was kind of the format we used last year, but our principles have monthly K-12 meetings, they have K-5 meetings, they have 612 meetings, um, they have data analysis days, they have lab days, they have... they have data analysis days, they have lab days, they have company. Um, so we need to, we need to start them out.
But that doesn't help the students at Murphy, they're getting this till April twenty.
Yeah, what happened though is last year, it was the same order we did in this last year, so when we get to them again, they'll have a full year of implementation.
Okay. So it seems like they, that would be a disservice to the students in their building, and they're not, their teachers are not getting the feedback from the other teachers in the school here.
Right.
So it seems like. Like Murphy's working on the growth of the goals that we identified last April, right now, and then we'll be working on all the goals.
So they're not held to the same, because they're not getting the information as quickly as Schindler is, the school year.
We've just got the instructional round information last April. So now they need to, like Schindler in the Cacti, we, we want more time to work on goals before you come in. So they really.
It's not a change in information, it's a number they're evaluating while they're doing it. So they just evaluate it, and then they're gonna work on what they were supposed to, and then come back and then they will talk about it again.
So yeah, each school has basically one solid year to implement, it's just, the only way we can do it is throw, if you spread it out for over a year, so. Murphy will have the exact same time that Cheryl has the worst iron roll.
I think if they, if they bring them up, it's gonna be too soon for them to.
Yeah.
Go in and take that lens and be deeper to come up with these next really targeted areas. So they're giving them the same timeframe as all the other schools.
So the benefit that Cheryl has is because we can take this information now and really project their P throughout the year, and that, I can see where you're saying that would be more of a benefit ahead of the end of the year.
Right.
But then if you're Murphy, you can say, okay, our P was on this, this, and this, how did it work? So it, it will benefit them in a different way, and then when they do have that in March, how did it work, then how will we use that to project their P for the following year? Even though it's further along, it's still imperative to sure.
I'm just thinking about students in the classroom, the teachers.
And there aren't, like, there's labs throughout the year, like I was saying too, so there will be other opportunities for teachers to be in each other's bill, in each other's rooms before that time too.
And, yeah, in fact, uh.
Well, because if you're saying, because that's test scores, you know, we got testing going on, and there's standard going on, and it's like, all the buildings are focused on their instructional rounds outcomes, that's one of their stuff, they all have outcomes that they're working with.
Um, and there was just a part today that Sanlance County is bringing their teachers to Murphy and Schindler, because they're right spots, folks, to do instructional rounds, and those buildings will help all of us. All right, so, oops, let's see. All right, um, what else are we doing? Based on the data that we received last year, uh, district-wide book study. Um, we actually received this book last year, because the administrators and the learning coaches did this book study, and it's on the Ten Mind Frames for Visible Learning by John Hedy, which is, you know, we've heard about him, because he's. You know, just a little bit. Um, all teaching staff have this book. Um, they received it in the spring, uh, we asked them to read chapters one and two for our opening day PD, and our administrative team is collaborating prior to each, um, PD session on a way to roll out the chapters, and we're pre-planning together, reflecting on the building PD, so we're still living the book another year. Um, it's all best practices, everything that's aligned to, um, the essentials and Amazon, and so the discussion is surrounding those evidence-based concepts. Um, so we are leading next week the principals' night to go over what, we're gonna put chapter nine ahead of the other chapters, because it's on environment, and, um, we're gonna plan what that book study looks like, district-wide, um, next week for our September meeting, and so forth. Which is really good. Um, we, there's a video I wanna show you, and I don't wanna speak today, so I want, um, Oscar Redrigas. We asked Oscar, okay, so this is a sort of a disarray of all, so we handed out all the books at the last PD last year, and Oscar wasn't at that PD session. So Doug, Kurt, you know, took it to him the next morning, and, here's your book for next year's book study, and he was like, is this mine? Can I keep it? Can I write on it? I love free books, can I write on this? And he's like, yes, it's your book. So the next few weeks, he dug right into it, he was in every floor school, which is obviously in every floor school, he's been teaching for forty-two years, if you don't know, he's our most senior teacher. And he's writing things down, and I'm, I'm gonna stop talking now, and, um, we interviewed him, he's, this, we showed this video to all of us with teachers, and he's part of our, our book study on August twenty-first, and, um, it was so much fun to listen to him, so I'll stop talking. How do I do?
Four.
He's out.
Well, uh, good morning, everyone. Uh, my name is Oscar Redrigas, and I'm happy to be here today to give you an idea of what I've experienced the last forty-two and a half years. And then, of course, this book here, this book here that, uh, we were asked to read over the summer. I know you're all excited about it. I didn't read it either, but, just kidding, I, I read the first six chapters, the first six chapters, and I'm gonna tell you right now, it's an excellent book, it really is. And, uh, so, and I was looking at this book over the summer, uh, Teaching for Success, Visual Learning, and I, my friends up north in East Allos, saw me looking at this book, reading it, and they were asking, why are you reading that? I mean, you've been teaching for over forty-two years, and you don't have to teach, and I said, no, come on, wait, there's only something else, you teach well, reading, and, uh, why not try to find something that actually works too? And so I opened this up, and Doug gave me this book, and, uh, it was thirty-second hour, and I'm, I'm looking at it, and he gave me this book, I said, oh, can I keep it? It's sure, it's yours. So, uh, I went into my office, and I shared this very first page, I opened it up, and I went through this with my students, and, and we went over them, and then of course, I got this cover where it says engaging in dialogue, and the current families can talking and listening. And, and the kids said, oh, that's what we do. And, yeah, we do, we, we, as teachers, we hear this all the time. And so we went through this, and I told the kids, we're gonna work on some of this stuff, and, and what I noticed as I went through this book, there's a lot of information in here, and I know that, uh, if you look at the books, you know, I'm right out of that, there's something here about the impact that we have on kids. You know, whether you've been teaching twenty years, ten years, or even one or two years, you've already gained an impact on kids. Really. And sometimes we don't know, you know, and I shared a couple emails just recently, uh, with Miss Bradford, and, and Doug, wow, you know, you, I think you all remember those teachers we had back in November, during junior high or high school. And, uh, they said, boy, I didn't like that teacher very good, I liked that. You know, they made us feel real comfortable, and you took an interest in what we were doing. And I still feel that today, and I think you do too, and that's the important thing. You know, every day, should be at the first grade school. You know, I'll somewhere, you know, at one of your back, you didn't have road, the very first day on the job, he was in high school, and he gave me my sports class, third hour. And some of the guys had some questions, and, and I didn't even have that. It, like, he just stood up there in front of the class, they're talking about his favorite, um, players and sport activities, and we were talking about some running back in shop awareness, some sweepers guy. And I'll never forget that, just like kids don't forget what they do, or how you treat them in that classroom, just amazing. And we're just looking at the impact here, you know, they know you have the passion, you know, they know what they don't have too. You know, so, when you go through this, and you'll see something in here about the golden circle, the golden circle. I know, I've been asked this fucking year, I, I think the last ten years, people have been asking me, when are you retiring and so on, and, and I always go, everyone, I love what I do. I still believe I can add an impact, a positive impact. I know I have an extra energy, because, uh, I'm ready, I, I'm ready to leave the blood, you know, that energy that it takes, you know, to do the job. And what I think to do is keep them engaged, keep them engaged, and why? So I want them to be experienced more, right here, in the J, you know, in, in, in my group, in my classroom. So that's exactly what I'm trying to tell you, this golden circle. And so they have to understand why you do what you do. We have to know what we're doing here, we have to make those decisions all the time, this golden circle. You know, I sit here, also here about good work project, and activate prior knowledge, we do this all the time, do it before the lesson, during the lesson, uh, sometimes in the lesson, we have our material targets, we do this all the time, we check, uh, for understanding the targets, and then that's all the purpose, and then there's more. You know, you know, again, and then you have a check for one, you know, you'll see, uh, yourself, do you see yourself as, uh, looking at your impact, evaluating your impact as a student learning? I know, I do all the time now, you know, during the summer, I was reading this textbook, and, uh, I realized, when I'm out there in a tennis court for kids, uh, seven, nine-year-olds, and, and sometimes you have to make adjustments, even with high school kids, you have to make adjustments. You have intervention, you have to intervene and, and change the lesson, so have a, it'll work, you know, to make it better, to get every kid. You know, here it says, no value impact, I like that, no value impact, you know, the visible learning, you know, visible learning, we do it all the time in the classroom, when you talk to kids, and you tell the classes, they'll talk to their neighbor, or we talk, tell them thumbs up, thumbs down, or, you know, that kind of thing, read a history of cards, or whatever, but we do this all the time, but, but it's important that we, we continue and then make sure we evaluate, that we evaluate what we do in our classroom. And, uh, I, I guess the good thing is that we do have collaboration on Tuesdays, because I know those, those in the J here, you know, that we, it's all, we like getting together and going over, uh, social studies and going over issues you're, you're with. So I think when you read this, you read all the different mindframes, uh, you'll see how important this is. I read this other thing about, uh, R G I, you know, they have a scale here, something about meta, uh, meta-analysis, uh, scale here, and I see it goes way over the ten-point, it's a one-point zero-seven, and, and, and the issue is about how we, we, uh, intervene, and, and I think that's something that we should work on too, again, uh, in our departments. But anyway, I, I did, I did read some of this, and like I said, the first six chapters that I could show you, you know, so, uh, and I think you'll find something worth following there. And again, if I was a gym teacher, man, Eric, I think you really, uh, will enjoy this book. So, uh, thank you for listening, and I hope you have a very good year. Slap.
So, that was fun. Uh, that day went well, and so we're continuing on with the book study. The, the third thing, uh, that we were planning to implement this year is, we saw a need, um, to put out a lesson plan guidance document that really was, is helpful for the teachers on what, um, what is, what is effective, what is considered effective planning within domain one and within, uh, domain four. So we rolled that out, and I gave that to you, that's the, the green sheet, that was given to teachers on the first day, and includes everything, all those common themes that we saw in instructional rounds, the standards, the success criteria, the assessments they're using, instructional activities, um, how they're differentiating, and then, and then a reflection of what's, what are you gonna change for tomorrow, or what are your next steps with this game there? So we rolled that out, and again, the, the principals are continuously talking about this, because it really comes down to the principals and how conversations that they're having with teachers about their lesson plans, because it is required by, we all get teachers have lesson plans, and so how are, and we have to evaluate them on those lesson plans? So what are some common language that we're identifying to give feedback to the teachers?
Is this something the teachers requested, or something?
A lot of the new teachers, we have over fifty new teachers, and I, I'm gonna say over fifty percent of them are asking, what do you require for lesson plan? So that really hurts, there are several reasons why they came to this, but yeah, we have a lot of new teachers that are requesting.
Anything you can, you can take the stress out of your day?
Yeah, I don't know, we respect, we respect. We got anything for us.
Anybody got any questions?
I think I'm getting old, because you kept saying linking blocks, I kept thinking you're in linking law.
Yeah.
You know, we used to play with those when we were kids?
Someone said that before.
And I was like, oh my goodness.
I think this is great stuff.
It's great.
We're doing great, I mean, really, we have a lot of accomplishment, so we should be amazingly proud of the whole team for bringing us there. And our kids are getting just, can't say that enough, they're getting a lot on the first day after the year, so.
I love watching the building presentations, to see it, where you want to act.
Here's another example of why I wish we had to go later in here, because those are giving us the data, shockingly, it's shitwore. Gee, who had anything to do with that? I don't know. Nobody in this room, yeah, nobody in this room. Just like you never had anything to do with Murphy when they were off the charts, and you never had anything to do with Cheryl when they were off the charts, and I really, I really wish, you know, give us a report, let us know how you're doing, you know, they wanna see how it goes. Do we have linking blocks with administrative staff? Because, I mean, you, I don't know if you were here, Scott, when Jim was at Mayfield.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I remember many years ago talking with him, and, I mean, because he was killing it at Mayfield, and I was proud of that, because I was Mayfield kid, and nobody ever talked to him. I mean, and he was, he was way up there on all the scores, and the rest weren't really so close. And you guys have changed all, I really give you a lot of credit for that. Because I remember asking him, has anybody talked to you, anybody trying to follow what you're doing, and he said, no. And I know somebody in term that somebody ought to be talking to, and hopefully they are, and so I think it's great, whole clever processes. Yeah, it's Kevin Roedman, who said, all of us are better than any of us, boy, that sure fits here, so, great job.
Thanks, Michelle.
Kevin said it about seventeen times a day.
Yes, he did.
Burning our brain too, I don't miss it as much as maybe you do, but, uh.
Why I'm fit here, so.
I just think with, um, Oscar Redrigas, Mr. I, he is just, um, teaching forty-two years and still willing to learn, and that man, um, has had an impact on me, and my kids throughout their tenure here, and he's just, but he knows it'll be a huge loss to the district, I mean, I'm sure he'll retire one day, I wish someone has it, every year he's gonna retire, and then he's like, he loves it, he's, he makes such an impact in the classroom, and, and on the tennis court, giving an impact in my son's life, without a father, and you young teachers, we're japping him, learn from him, because he's of us, well, the marriage.
Okay, let's move on, then our next item on the agenda is action items, and first up is consent grouping, we only really have one type of minutes on earth tonight, and that's the approval of the minutes that the August seventh, two thousand and eighteen board. So I, unless someone wants that poll for some unknown reason, I would entertain a motion.
I'm like, the motion of the reading of the minutes to be raised, and the consent agenda items to be approved in the thousand percent.
Support it.
And moved and supported? Uh, let's, just pee back.
Yes.
Just do that.
Aye. Aye.
Strigga.
Aye.
Jason Becker.
Aye.
Just rolling society as well, we should have some. All right, then next, moving on to the resolution approving two thousand and nineteen tax levy for all forty-twenty-nine, I don't know, you want to comment on that?
I'm gonna comment on it.
It's that time of the year.
Required. We had the vote last year, ten years, renewed, not homestead, so we have one of your questions you had, Mike, regarding school funding, school districts have to let not homestead nor if state. So it's a requirement of the whole schooling process, so that's pretty straightforward, and then the debt millages, the required amount, covering principal interests, as I wrote up in the weekender. And then the debt millages, the required amount covered principal interest, as I wrote up in the Weekender for the forthcoming year, I anticipate.
Anybody have any questions, or Mark can make them?
I'll make the motion that the two thousand and nineteen tax levy resolution is form out for twenty-nine, and we'll be just saying.
No support?
Very good, and supported. Mrs. Becker.
Aye.
Mr. Haganon.
Aye.
Mrs. Butler.
Aye.
Mrs. Novak.
Aye.
Mrs. Peabody.
Aye.
Mr. Rollins, if I, if she has to, just to queue. Next, board member communication topics. Anybody have anything they wanna say, Ed? Continue.
I just wanna ask Mark a question about, I don't know that our state of Michigan that lots of officials have not cast a budget yet. So, we getting close, or we gonna go into the state shutdown by the thirtieth? So what are you nearing for school funding?
Not good.
Not good?
Would play it out over the holiday weekend is what's in the public airways of the public head, which is, they're looking to kick the can down the road. Instead of a shutdown, possibly, they're calling continuation, which is, instead of any increase, we'll get the same amount of foundation loans as last year. What's left out, because it's the news media, so we really don't know what they're telling us. Is that the categoricals? What's that with regards to retirement? Because there's a lot of money in categoricals in that school aid that are still undefined. So that's not good news for us. Because the longer it's delayed, obviously, their state year starts October first.
Right.
We will be going into our fourth operational month, and we still won't know what school funding is. And if you remember, my prediction back in the early January is, I hope you don't repeat the last year grand home, which is, we got eleventh month of our school year, and we got prorated. And everyone basically had to take from the fund balance. Obviously, the overall economy is not also going well, so I don't know. Where our handicap is, it doesn't get played out in the public. It's all in committees, and it's very secret. So, you know, through Matt's connections, mind, we hear very little what's really formatting. I think you saw it planned on the weekend. It's a dueling match between road funding and the gas tax. Everything is a hostage to that. So wait and see what happens. Let's hope they don't have a shutdown.
Pardon?
Let's hope they don't have a shutdown.
Same boys are already running for it.
So again, I wanna thank you and your staff. A lot of new teachers signing. I did attend August twenty-first, that was really fun. That was neat. That was me having the beta very well. Nice little something to do, recognize the students. Everyone has great schooling.
A lot of sports has started already, so lots of things are going on, good.
It's good to have all the kids and our teachers back in the building. Having our everybody back to their structure.
Anything to say? Nope. Anything to say?
I'm tired. I started working today.
So I was saying, too late, why can't it manage?
I haven't had that with seven o'clock in four months, okay?
You can't have that.
Bear with me, alright?
It's called a don't eat Lee's house.
And I started my doctorate degree, you guys will bring it.
Wow, that's awesome. Well, I just wanted to say, since I wasn't here last time, that I regret that I wasn't here. I would have been more than happy to have thrown my substantial weight behind, you know, the, the, the vote for the bond. And I, I regret that I was not here to express how I feel about that. So you guys are gonna have to suffer through this for a couple of minutes tonight. But I, I can't tell you how important I think it is. I do regret that I wasn't here. I wanted to be part of that team and said, "Yes, let's go forward. Let's advance our community because it's the right thing to do." And I was reminded of, I'm often reminded of quotes, because I don't have an original thought in my head, I swear. When you hear so many people over the years say so many great things, sometimes it's hard to come up and develop something of your own that's interesting, or you think is thought-provoking. But one of the few that I keep coming back to is lead, follow, and get out of the way. And one of the things that I think that we're charged with as a board is to set the tone, be the leaders, and get out there and get behind this. And, you know, as, as I was looking at, all right, what's the origin of that quote? Nobody knows, that's what it comes down to. They attributed it to Thomas Paine, if you go all the way back to, you know, way back. But they, they discovered all of his materials, he never said it. And they can't find it anymore. And so what they ended up doing is, they, they think the closest they can get is they can attribute it to George Patton, Joe Patton. And Patton says, you know, "We herd sheep, we drive cattle, we lead people." And he said, "Lead me, follow me, or get out of my way." And I think it's very appropriate that we, as a board, get out there, be the leaders on this thing. Let's push this through, because it is the right thing to do, and it's our opportunity to do it. And so I just, again, I apologize that I wasn't here. Kind of an occupational risk every once in a while for me, but I would have wanted to be here with you here in spirit. And I think it's important that we get out there and be behind this, and so.
I do wanna make one comment. Now that woke up a little. Last night I sent out the text about, "Look, your homeschool partnerships." But I wanted to mention that just here, that, you know, and Sean is doing such an amazing job with that. When a high school friend tells you that, that's, it's like the number one in the state as far as, you know, as far as homeschool partnerships. That's pretty awesome to read, let me tell you. It sure made, I told her, it made my week, it literally made my month, probably a year. But the idea that we have something like that, that's to celebrate. And we need to celebrate your accomplishments and the work in that, because it's awesome. And I'm just, I'm really proud of it, so.
Well, I, I appreciate you sharing, because I loved the comment that said, "I'll never stray from the parent."
I was gonna say, when you read that, that's why I had to show you the screenshot, because you had to read what the parent said.
Right.
You know, but this is her son, and her only son, she only has one. And it's like, when you put that into trust, you know, into trust, and something like that, absolutely. And I know, I went to school with her, I know what she came from, I know what she, she was high academic, very high achieving, you know, amazing, and student.
Right.
Wow. She's entrusted us.
Wouldn't like to just piggyback on what you said. Up here this weekend, Matt and I were able to work with the fifth. And that was great, you know, we had some that were naysayers, some that were more positive and for. It's great to, you know, communicate with both sides, to hear why people are against OT. And also tell them why we feel the way that we do. So just wanted to piggyback and thank our superintendent for leading the charge. Yes, it's his job, right? But he doesn't have to do that, so I do want to say thank you.
Agreed.
Alright.
Well, I think for that, because that would've been a long three hours without having someone to talk to. Really appreciate it. But we had a number of, over the course of three days of Up Here Days, a number of parents, a number of teachers, staff members, uh, board members that volunteered a lot of time to, for, six-hour time, interacting with the community. And there's a number of-
Passport member?
What's that?
A passport member.
Passport member, that's right, that's right, a passport member. We're never letting her go.
I was gonna say, yeah.
Um, and it's been great, and we've had a number of, you know, home events that we've got, uh, you know, a bond informational table that folks are continuing to volunteer for. We sent out an email to our two hundred and seventy-plus folks that were involved in some of the community forum work and above needing folks to work with them on football games. And I think it took us five minutes to fill up all the slots we needed. So it's just, we're getting a great response from our people. Uh, I'm gonna send out a weekend report updating my activity over the last several weeks. Who I've been speaking to, had the opportunity to speak with, uh, Kuanis today. It was a great, great lunch meeting, but just interacting with those folks, we, we have their public support for the bond. And asking very directly all the groups I've been speaking with, if they would publicly endorse the proposal. I have to do announce that Kuanis is gonna do that. But great questions, a great, great group of folks to speak with. And just, uh, to echo what Mike said, it's, 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 it's not the perfect plan. No plan is, but it's our plan. It's one that we involve over six hundred people in developing, change a lot from beginning to end. And so, uh, I think it's one that people can get behind. And, uh, just to update the board, we've actually put on the district website a calculator where you can plug in your taxable value and it will tell you your monthly cost for the bond. So the, the cost of this program is something that we're not afraid to share with people. It's a bargain. So, um, just, I would encourage folks to continue to visit that site and check that stuff out, so. That's it. Yep. And we'll have, uh, in the next week or two, we're also gonna announce some community forums that do some question and answer stuff, uh, different locations of the community.
Great.
That's all I have.
Alright, thank you very much. One more motion.
Motion for Jerry.
Support. Alright, we have a motion in support. Uh, Mrs. Peabody.
Aye.
Mrs. Novak.
Aye.
Mrs. Butler.
Aye.
Mr. Haganon.
Aye.
Mrs. Becker.
Aye.
Mr. Rollins, if I, if you're interested. Thank you, everyone.